Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is today, June 12th at 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Frisato?
Here.
Etac?
Stark?
Here.
Chancet?
Wolf?
Here.
Salvati?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uwer?
Here.
Simone?
Here.
And McFadden?
Here.
Okay, we do have a quorum. Next item is item two, which is approval of the minutes for May 1st, May 8th, May 14th, May 15th, and May 22nd of 2018. Those are for the committee of the whole also. Do we have any comments or questions? Hearing none, can I get a motion to recommend the city council?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Stark, a second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, both will go to city council. Next item is item three. Items removed, added, or changed. I know Laura, we have one, and that is we're gonna take item 15 off of the agenda. Is that the only change we have?
Yes, that's the only change we have, and Gary was going to provide a brief explanation of the reason why we're taking that off the agenda tonight.
We're just recommending removal of item 15. I think I sent out an email earlier to council that the insurance-related issue, we went out to our advisor, and they said that that was fine. So we can waive the owners and contractors' liability insurance waiver issue, and then all other items that advanced disposal was requesting to be amendments to the contract, they have waived their requirement or waived their request. So they're no longer requesting any additional modifications to the contract.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right, then, we're gonna move on, since there are no other items to be added or changed. We're gonna move on to matters from the public. This is when if somebody from the public has got anything they'd like to address the committee on that is not on the agenda, you could come up to the podium and do so. Otherwise, if you want to address us on something that is on the agenda, just make sure you get my attention as we're having a conversation, and I'll make sure we get you up here to talk about it. All right, next item is item five, wastewater treatment plant monthly update. Alderman, O'Brien.
Yeah, this is just a monthly update for the wastewater treatment plant, as you said, Dave, and Jerry Ruth is here to go over it, you know, reading through it. There's no great changes, just some progress, and it looks like good progress. So Jerry, I'll hand it to you.
Thank you very much. Let's see if I can just get this full screen here. There it is. Sorry, it's been a whole month, and I forgot. So this is the update for last month down at the treatment plant. There's been a lot of progress over the last month, so a lot of good news. We'll start with the main building up north. We have completed all the concrete for the building walls and floors, and have started installing the steel joists and the decking for the roofing system above the office area and the maintenance garage. The precast concrete roofing has been installed and is in place. The process of completing that roofing system is gonna take place in June and possibly into July. The main building electrical and plumbing and process roughens have been going on a lot more now that they have a lid on it. The exosloe disinfection and chemical phosphorus removal systems have been started up. City staff will be trained on that equipment, I believe, in about two weeks. The digester operations building, the concrete slabs and walls are ongoing. We'll show you some pictures of that later, but it's coming up out of the ground, and no longer is just a giant hole in the south end of the site. We have also installed a temporary odor abatement system that we spoke about recently. Final costs aren't in for that, but the cost for the install was just under $10,000. The cost for the rental is one of the larger portions of that, so that is gonna be going on and on until the digesters are up and running again. So once we have those final numbers, I'll bring them to you. Are there any questions on the activities ongoing? No? All right, well, let's talk about costs, everybody's favorite subject. To date, we've spent about $14.5 million in engineering and construction services, and at this point, we're at about 66% completion. Contractor's updated schedule will be submitted to us in three days. I anticipate that number will be 71% when he submits it. Seems to go in 5% increments. As far as change orders, no change in the change order since we last spoke. There is a change order on the horizon of about $10,000. We'll go over that when I bring it forward, but it's just not quite made the rounds for signatures yet. Schedule update, we are now tracking 26 days behind as opposed to 29, so he's chipping away at it, slowly trying to bring the project closer and closer into being in line with our scheduled deadline. Fly through these real quick. All right, project photos. This is the main building back in April. We still hadn't gotten the elevated slabs for the second story poured yet, but we had been making a lot of progress on the block walls and the interior. This is a month later, starting to come up through the second floor walls, and this is the building on Friday. You see that the steel joists and decking in the background of the picture there are going up over the maintenance garage. The precast on the left side of the building is over the process area, and we're preparing for the final block walls, and then eventually steel joists over the office area, which is in the lower right-hand portion of the building in this view. Here's just another perspective on the progress over the last two months. The digester operations building, this is back in April, we had the first cover being assembled there in the background, that green ring. For perspective, by the way, that's about 40-foot in diameter. This is back in May, starting to see walls come up out of the floor, or out of the earth, and you'll see in the next photo, we're starting to prep for elevated slab pores, and I'm hoping that within the next month, we're gonna be backfilling this structure at least partially, and installing the remainder of the piping that goes, and duct bank that goes into this building. You'll see also the digester cover number two is being painted, that's the black ring in the background. The previous one that was green is now in the digester on the left-hand side, so digester rehab is also ongoing. And here is a quick picture in the lower right-hand corner, that, those two white rectangles, there's a duct that's running across the top of that roof. That is the sludge handling building with the duct that we installed as part of the odor abatement system. Just wanted to get you a feel for where it is on the site, what it is that we did. That duct is treating the air with ozone currently, and with relative success from what I've been told. So if there are no other questions or comments?
Anybody got any questions, comments? Mayor?
I just, we've had an inordinate amount of rain the last few, couple of months here, and I know, you know, the plant has to take excess water treatment. Has the construction been any kind of an issue as we've dealt with all this water that we've been throwing at you on the database?
Yes, with this building in this picture, in the center of the picture, there has been flooding of the excavation. Now, the flooding that we experienced did tend to coincide with rain events. At the same time, it did also coincide with failure of the contractor's pumping system, and hoses breaking loose, and things like that. So if it could go wrong, it went wrong on those storms, but no structural damage, no issues with our new product here. But yeah, the excavation did fill with water. We were able to pump it down typically within about a day.
And the storage tank is still working as normal through this whole thing?
Yes, it is. Yep, yep. If the plant needs to go into excess flow and treat with essentially chlorine, then they have the ability to do that, and I believe they've done that at least once or twice in the last month. It's been obviously a very wet spring.
You know, I've had the opportunity in the last year and a half to bring several other mayors from the area have called me and asked if I would take them down there so they could specifically see that storage tank, because apparently, we're kinda pioneering that idea to some degree, or at least the engineering, the way we're doing it, and it's being cited as kind of a, you know, one way to do something. So I've had them come up there from Grundy County and Northern Cook County and whatever to look at that tank. And I'm always very proud, but, you know, our staff does a nice job of explaining everything to them, but, I mean, that really is quite a device down there that we have that, you know, a lot of other places don't have. I had the mayor from Diamond, Illinois, in here a few months back, and she has some serious issues that that tank would seemingly be the answer to a lot of what they're doing. So I'm thinking that, you know, we may be seeing model or copies of that spread around the region here before it's over.
Yeah, I wouldn't be surprised. It's a luxury that you have it, especially with the combined sewers that are in town. They're being separated, but since, I believe, the late '70s, this has been in place with this function, and it is a, I can't take credit for any of this, but it's a great idea.
I don't think it was late, it was probably mid, early '80s that we put that tank down there, but it's, it seems to be answering the issue when we have it, so. And given how high the river's risen a couple times recently, I'm sure that that's kinda choked things down there a little bit with some of the issues that you have to deal with on a normal basis, much less having all the construction going on.
Oh yeah, but the city staff has managed to maintain the plant, maintain operations very well throughout. Byron's not here to hear this praise, you're gonna have to tell him, Gary. Staff's doing a great job.
Dave? Okay. Jerry, you mentioned earlier change orders, so I'm just kinda curious, the procedure on change orders, and you said that it hasn't made the rounds yet for signatures. How long does it take to get a change order processed so the contractor is getting paid for what he's doing?
Well, typically it goes to him first, so that usually takes about a day. I will email him the signature form and the backup data. He already has all of the individual components, the contract modification requests, they've already been approved to a point. So he has all that background information. He usually gets me a signed copy. I expect it at our construction meeting tomorrow. So I'll get three copies of that, I'll sign it, and I'll get it to Byron, so in order to get it on the agenda, it's usually about a week, and then after that, it has to go to council, so all in, maybe a month.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I just wanna comment on the odor abatement. It definitely seems to work. I work about a three wood from there, so, and definitely has helped, so thank you for putting it in correctly.
Glad to hear it. Happy to hear it.
Mike, we do have somebody from the audience through the ones.
I just wanted to know, the G C is...
Williams Brothers Construction?
So Jerry, just with all the rains that we did have, with infiltration into the piping, did you notice any negative effects?
Negative effects in terms of process flow, they're able to handle it. Don't wanna get too technical, but when they get a slug of water through in a big rain event, they will, just like sloshing a bin of water, you'll get all the water slinging to the back of your basin or whatever you're slinging. That happens with the solids, too. So they have to return a lot of solids within the process, they have to do it very quickly, or you're gonna start to see a lot of solids going into the river. So they are able to handle that now. All the equipment is working, even the equipment that's really on its last legs is working very well. What you may notice is, from the combined sewer areas, there could be odors. After a big rain event, it clears everything out, and then you have the dry period after that, where odors can creep back up into the sewers. That's what I would call another negative effect that the public might see. As far as the plant goes, though, no permit limit exceeding or anything like that, no permit violation, so I think we're good.
And so the combination sewer that we're taking out on the west side, that should help also immensely, I would think, right?
It should, yes.
All right, anybody else, any questions for Jerry? That's it, Jerry, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. All right, next item is item number six, ordinance 18-31 proposing the establishment of a special service area, number 62 for Batavia Main Street. Alderman, Stark?
Okay. Five years ago, in 2013, an SSA was approved, number 57, for Main Street, for a five-year term, that was a term that was limited to $40,000 per year. And so now that it's expiring, as we've talked about before, Main Street has come before us and asked us to move the levy amount up to $100,000, and that we're not obligated to grant the maximum levy. So staff structured an ordinance to require Main Street to make a specific levy request by August 1st of each year. If they do not make a specific request, we can have, we have put the levy at the existing $40,000. And also, the city council can terminate this at any, the SSA at any time by passing an ordinance to rescind it. And so that eliminates the need for definitive end dates, so this can be an open-ended SSA. So it's not a five-year in term, it could be, it's a year-to-year SSA, which would have to be renewed effectively every August 1st by Main Street. So there's an anticipated public hearing for this on August 20th, 2018, and there's some additional background information. And Scott, my question for this, as we go through this process, is I've talked to some of the property owners in downtown, and we talked about the difference, and you and I had an email exchange about the difference between how many votes they get. And so that seemed to me to be an important part of this, in terms of, since they're paying the SSA, what their input is. So if you could explain that a little bit better, because as we all know, you know, there are some larger property owners, and then there's some small property owners, is it all equal?
It's not necessarily equal. I mean, essentially what the statute says, it's 51% of the owners and 51% of the electors. So the electors are anybody that is a registered voter within the area in question. So you, in order to overturn this, it's called a backdoor petition, you have to get 51% of the owners and electors. So, you know, some owners are going to own multiple parcels. If they're in the same ownership, then, you know, it's going to be, they may have multiple parcels, but it's going to be that, you know, they would be part of that same number. So if you have separate LLCs, those are counted separately. So it just depends on how you have the ownership situation in there. So if we got a petition, we'd obviously have to have it reviewed and have the city attorney review it to see, in fact, if there is the 51% ownership situation. But the electors are pretty simple, you can just go through the voter rolls and everything else. The property owners is a little more complex, because we have to go back and make sure all of the physical owners and, depending on, again, how their ownership is, are counted.
Let's say, just for the sake of argument, the property owner is BEI, and we know that they own many parcels in downtown. Do they get one vote in, if they're all registered under BEI, the same corporation? Do they get one vote, or one vote for each parcel?
I believe they get one vote for each parcel. Don't quote me on that, but I believe that's what happens.
Okay. Just as an aside, the reason I brought that up is because I've talked to BEI, they're not in favor of raising the levy, and so, and they did mention to me that it's very hard to get that petition going, because most of the business owners in downtown don't pay attention to what's going on. They may own the property, but they rent to a tenant, so they're not totally in line with what's going on. And so I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood that, you know, there is some pushback on this, and to factor that into, you know, your thoughts on this. So, but it's, we're only one cog in this wheel, but I just wanted to throw that out there. So anyone? Marty?
How many parcels are residential versus commercial?
There's only a handful of residential ones. I'd probably say there's half dozen, perhaps, that are exclusively residential in one fashion or another.
So a question that I received was, due to the residential, what are they getting in return for this versus Main Street's primarily supporting a lot of the commercial efforts in it? So why would a resident parcel owner pay an SSA that would be no different than any other residential parcel in town?
Right. And what happens in the case of a single-family residential property is they have the ability to get a refund or rebate of the taxes. There's a couple of them that have done that in the past in the area. So they would just submit, you know, a tax bill showing, you know, what they paid, and then, you know, we would give them a rebate or abatement of the taxes. So if it's single-family owner-occupied residential, that's what we've done in the prior ordinance, that's what I believe we have in this current ordinance, too, or will when we have the establishing ordinance.
With the paying the tax and then getting the abatement back, is it easier to exclude them out in the very beginning?
No, because sometimes they, we need them in order to get contiguity to other commercial properties, and that's the problem. Otherwise, we would just exclude them. But in many cases, in fact, most of the cases, we need them to get contiguity to some other commercial parcel. We tried, when we originally did this, you know, before I was here, you know, tried to keep out all the residential parcels as much as we could, but there were still some that kinda got caught up in it because they were needed for contiguity.
So even with continuity, they could not get exempt?
Correct. Right.
Laura, you got a question?
I just wanted to comment about that, that having a vibrant downtown is an enhancement to the value of the property, even if it is residential, in order to attract people to live there.
Anybody else have any comments?
So, they're asking for $100,000.
Up to.
Up to, but they're not levying $100,000. What is their initial...
Unless they ask.
Unless they ask, but what is, do you have any idea of what their initial request would be?
Not at this point, no. I think, you know, we would, with the ordinance, how the ordinance is structured is that it would allow for a levy up to $100,000. That would be the council's decision on how much would actually be levied. They would on August 1st, by August 1st, make their specific request as to how much they need. So if they don't make a request, we have this structured so that it would be $40,000, and that's all they'd get. If they are going to come back and say, you know what, this year, we're gonna need $50,000, they'll make a request for us, and then as part of our normal levy process, we would then, you know, have you decide whether or not that was adequate or not, and if it is, then, you know, as part of the budgeting process and the normal way we do levies, that that would then be, you know, requested at $50,000 level, so.
You know what, and I understand, Laura, that, you know, vibrant downtown is essential. I mean, it is the hub of the whole city, you know? But I know Nick made a point a while back, saying, you know, we've contributed an awful lot to the downtown in the form of streetscapes and things, and so I just don't know if, I just, I guess I'm just kinda torn on burdening our business owners, well, not the business owners, but the property owners and the residents with more taxes. So I just, I don't know how to go on that, you know? I'm just feeling my way through.
A comment, and this has, I've been on council long enough to pay attention to some of this, all of this. You know, when we originally started this, we, the thought process was, is that Main Street was going to be self-supporting. And so now, instead of going down, it's going up, and that's where I've been having a hard time with this. And that was one of the reasons I asked for financial statements, to look at where the money was going in Main Street. They do put on a lot of events. When I talk to business owners through the downtown, they don't see a lot of benefit for a lot of the events. And so that's where I look at it and go, okay, if you're a store on Wilson Street, and there's Windmill City Fest going on, and it's on Sunday or whatever, on holiday, and the stores are closed, what benefit am I getting from it? So that's where I'm having a hard time saying, should the city continue to support that? So that's just my opinion. Elliot, I think you had your hand up. No, you didn't? I thought you did. And Marty?
Yeah, along those lines, and I understand the point that you're saying about a residential parcel is enhanced, but if I'm looking at, I don't know, just looking at the lots with one of the ones, lot number 147 up there, that's not in the area, but its neighbor is, how do you quantify that with a res, you're asking some residences, residential owners, to shoulder more of a responsibility that I don't know is quantifiable versus everybody else in the town? Because I, living out where I live, receive a, my house is worth more with a nice vibrant downtown. I can't say that that translates to somebody just across the street from one that's not in it on the residential side. The business owners, I can see that a little bit more. I know your point is some business owners might not see the direct impact, but at least there's a more concerted effort with their business promotion programs, it's a lot more business-centric. I haven't seen anything that has been residential-centric, even for those 12 parcels, that's any different than you and I all pay.
But they can get their money back.
But they can get their money back, but that's the...
Dave, you got a comment?
Yeah, I'm supportive of this. I, as you, Susan, I was here when this thing first got hatched out of the egg, and yeah, the intent was that they become self-sufficient, but I think over the years, they've increased what it is that they ever thought that they would do. I think they're putting on a lot more events. I think they're a whole lot more active than what anybody ever envisioned. I think probably we've got the most active Main Street organization in the state, and I think, I think we'd be in deep trouble without them, as far as what this downtown does on a weekly basis during the summer, basically. I like the way the ordinance is written, or the establishment of it is written, where they have to come to us if they want more than the $40,000, we can discuss it then, we can ask why, you know, can't you do more fundraises? We can ask all kinds of questions. We've got the ability at that time to do that. I like the fact that if 51% of the property owners form together and get a petition saying 51% of them don't like it, it doesn't happen. So I think, and again, the residents can go get their abatement done if they choose to, too. So, you know, we've gotta look again at what's good for the community of the whole on this, and I think it just rolls right back into when this thing was born back eight years ago, or whatever it was, that, that we're doing it for the revitalization of the downtown, we're doing it for the entire community, and I think that's some of the things that we just saw in the recent survey, that the people wanted us to concentrate on, was more revitalization of the downtown. So I think we should move forward with it.
I do think that there's a lot of checks and balances in place, which is what you brought up. Helen?
I guess, I went back and I thought about this, going, having gone through the last SSA setup on this. You know, we talked a lot at that point about would they or should they be self-sufficient at some point, and should we cut the ties and let them be on their own, you know, and let the kid grow up and move away. I really feel like, when I go back and look at this, this is $40,000 through this SSA, we also provide $40,000 from the general fund that's in that. If we were to try to take $40,000 and spend it even on one staff or part-time staff person, could we, would we get any kind of that return? I don't think there's anybody in this room that could say we could get that return for the events that happened, the people that are brought into downtown, the businesses that are helped, you know, whether they perceive, you know, that, how they measure it, you know, that's all, I think, still up for discussion. I don't think there's any other way we could spend that money, whether we're taking it in an SSA, or whether we're taking it out of the general fund, or the combination of it, and get those benefits that I really think are there. You know, on a daily, weekly basis, I see things that happen in this town that without their interest and input, and the ability to take and grab people and turn volunteers into seven, or eight, or 10-year board members that are there that really make things happen, and that's the beauty of that, is they draw more people into it to keep it and sustain it. And there are, what, over $300,000 now in their budget? So all that money's being spent back in this community. I think that, you know, we might have our trepidations about where this could go, if it goes all the way up to $100,000, but I will say, I think we as council members need to ask for more, you know, financials, we need to see that, we need to figure out, okay, do we, once a year, ask for a meeting with the property owners so that they can come in and tell us what they perceive direct to us, not what we hear from one or two of them, but have an open meeting, bring them in, and ask them what they really think of it? So then we can gauge, do we keep doing this?
Scott, I mean, you rent downtown, so if your rent goes up to help fund this SSA, are you excited about it, or...
Well, I'm not excited about my rent going up, but I will, I will tell you this, just having been downtown since 2004, renting between two different locations, and watching Main Street evolve, both, you know, from the private sector and then being on council, they do an amazing job. They do an amazing job, and the dollars that we contribute into that, and if you wanna call them our events coordinator, so to speak, for the city, which is very trite, but they do, they bring more to the city. There's no way we could spend that money. There's no way we could spend that money, not even close, and get the results that they get. Not even close. So I, I think this is money well-spent, and I do think, we got checks and balances in place. Mike, I totally get what you're saying, but I, from a marketing standpoint, and, you know, Farmer's Market, Oktoberfest, Windy City, you name, you add all those things together, they bring a tremendous amount of value to this town, tremendous.
Dave?
Last comment. I think, you know, I can't speak for the business owners, why they don't think it's a huge benefit for them, maybe, but I can tell you that I hear from a lot of people that when they come down here for whatever the event is, mostly like the Bat Fest and the Egg Hop and all that kind of stuff, where you actually have to go from business to business to business, those people say, I didn't know this was here. The last Egg Hop was on a terrible windy, stormy day, so Main Street miraculously made it still happen over at the Water Street Studios. And quite a few people told me over there that day, because I was down there with them with my grandkids, said, we had no idea this was here. Never knew it was here, and we're going to come back down and get the kids signed up for somebody's art classes. So, you know, there's, there's benefits there.
Elliot?
So I, I wanted to kind of take a breath and hear everybody talk about this, and I agree with what most people have said here. I mean, to me, I had to separate this out because I don't look at this as a value judgment of Main Street's existence. I don't think that's in question here. The Main Street group does phenomenal work, and it comes down to the people that are running it. You're absolutely right, $40,000, you're not going to be able to spend it in another channel that is going to give as much back to the city as this does. So I'm supportive of, of making sure that Main Street can continue. My concern on this particular one is the indefinite term. If we're serious about this group being able to self-sustain, I don't see where the incentive is, even with the checks and balances, which I agree with, the year-over-year, making sure that, that we're in agreement, we're seeing the financials, we absolutely see the value is returned. I don't see where the incentive is that gets them to be self-sustaining.
I hear what you're saying. It's an $80,000 investment, 40 from the city, 40 from the community. It's the salary of one person, you know, at Main Street. So I don't know, I'm still struggling with it. The checks and balances helped me, but I don't know. Oh, wait, Tony?
Yeah, for residential property owners, Scott, you said some of them have gotten abates, abatement. Is there a notice provided to them, or is it up to them to figure that out?
You know, I don't recall how we did it originally. I know that there's at least two or three different properties that have filed for those abatements in the past. I'd have to look into that. I'm not, I'm not sure if we've actually given them official notice, hey, every year you can, you can do that or not, so I'd have to check into that.
Do you know roughly how many of the...
How many property owners that would qualify? Probably about half a dozen.
That's a good point.
Any other, any other thoughts? Scott, you had something? Sorry.
One more question, and this is for Scott. If they come back to us and they ask for another $25,000, do we then have to go through the public process again to raise the, from 40 to 65?
You don't have to go through the whole process like we're going through right now, but you do have to have a public hearing on the levy because you're decreasing the levy over 5% and what have you, so.
I kind of want to make sure that that was out there as well, that people knew that there are, there would be public process that that happens. If they request that, that, you know, it's just not a simple yes when they request it.
Correct.
It's a process to go through.
Right. And that's also what I was going to mention, is that, you know, the, there is a level of accountability that would happen if we have it set up like we do. So, you know, August 1st, they need to submit their request to say, you know, this is what we need, and then that's an opportunity for the council to debate that and say, you know, is this something that we want to do? Is that, is that amount good enough, or, you know, as you mentioned, you know, should we just terminate it entirely? So I think that gives us the opportunity to make some value decisions on what we want to do or not do. The only thing I would say is that to have a definite termination date, unless you're really planning to terminate this and say, you know what, we definitely don't want this after five years, we would rather not do that, because again, you can terminate this at any time just by passing an ordinance. It's a lot of work to do this, it's a lot of money to do this. We have to send out a lot of notices, the boundaries are complex, you know, the whole, the whole process of doing this, it's not like a simple SSA where it's a square, you know, we have a lot of properties and boundaries that we have to contend with. So it's a lot of work to do this every five years, unfortunately. So that's why we proposed it as an indefinite term, but again, it's really simple if you want to terminate it, pass an ordinance and goes away.
Hey, um...
Nick.
Nick, sorry.
I'm going to support this just because I, I like what they do and have a value, but as we move forward, I brought that up before more from a philosophical standpoint, and we need to be conscious of it as we do these checks and balances. Two things, you know, how do you make a cripple, you give him a crutch? They know it's there, they'll spend it, and like any good governmental body, if the money's there, they'll spend it. I have a strong feeling, if we didn't give it to them, they would survive and thrive, and the same events would occur, they would figure it out. I'm not going to put that onus on them, but I think we need to make that kind of the atmosphere, because if you know it's there, you'll spend it a little extra here, a little extra there for a promotion. It is effective or not effective, you don't care because the money's there, you know, it's just the way, the way it is when you have free money, so we need to be aware of it.
Okay, Marty?
Yeah, I understand what Nick is saying on that. But I think going along with what your concern is, when it was five years, it was kind of out of sight, out of mind for five years. I think we now have an opportunity to, every year, start hitting a little bit more with, if they're wanting to go up, go and justify it. They're saying they showed up at the stores, and, oh, I didn't know about this here, I'm going to come back. Well, is that true? Did we see an uptick in that? Did we see an uptick in the sales of that weekend or the following weekend as a result of that? And I think if we're doing that on a yearly basis with the justification of if they want more money and if we're going to be doing it, every year is now a ride-or-die kind of time, where that's their justification, so that it shouldn't come as a surprise, or that we're waiting five years for it to come in and then go, when the five years comes up, well, now what do we do? We should have been doing this all along. I think this is the time to do it, this is the way to do it.
Scott?
So a quick question, when, by August 1st, when they submit paperwork to, if they want to increase levy, what sort of backup do they provide? They bring justification, cost justification as to why that is?
Yeah, I think they would need to provide documentation of some sort to say, you know, it's not going to be, you know, please raise our levy to $60,000. I think they're going to have to provide some documentation to say, you know what, this year we have hired a temporary, you know, part-time person to help with events, or we've expanded our events to include X, or we've, you know, provided additional festival activities such as Y. So they would need to provide something for you to look at to say, you know, okay, this is why we need to have, it's just like any department head needs to provide you justification for, you know, things that they're asking for.
Going back to Marty's point, I think this is a great opportunity on an annual basis, as opposed to just set it and forget it for five years.
Right.
For them to come back and say, hey, here's how we did this year, almost just state-of-the-state, you know, report and how they're doing. Knowing them a little bit, just, you know, from, from the secular side, secular side, you know what I'm saying? They're, they're very well organized, and their work, their work plans are very, pretty comprehensive, so, you know, I know what you're saying, Nick, but I do, I think they'll, they'll spend it wisely. I don't think they'll go to the max right away.
I agree, that's why I'm supporting it, but we need to be conscious of it and keep this type of conversation going, because when they come to decisions, they'll be a little wiser.
Agreed. I just, you know, this is a very hard decision, too, because we can't control what Main Street does. So if Main Street comes to us and says, we want $30,000 more because we want to have two more events, how do we measure that? How do we say, yes, we agree, no, we don't agree? This is where it gets kind of murky, and, and, you know, some of their bigger events, you know, like Cocktails in the Park, that's one of those things, like, who does it benefit? You know, it's at night, the stores are closed, we're bringing a lot of people downtown, is it the restaurants? So those are those weird trade-offs. So if they have more events and they say we need another employee, again, how do we measure this? This is why I keep going, how do we measure this?
Well, let's put it on them. Let's, let's get some metrics.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, why not? I mean, if there's a return on the investment, what is it?
Right.
And let's find out how it can be measured.
I think that's a good idea. Okay.
There's other opportunities, I'm sorry, Mike, a lot of these events pay for themselves. Cocktails in the Park, if it's 30 bucks a person versus 25, most people are still going to go, you know, there are adjustments they can make that goes back to that justification thing.
I agree.
Everything, if there's two more events, that's great, bring them to us, you know, how are we getting a return? I mean, it's pretty, pretty easy to make it, it's not like they're just spending advertising dollars and it's poof, gone.
No, I totally understand that, although then when they start turning events into fundraisers, that's when the other side, you go, well, wait a minute. So, you know, Community Dinner turned into a fundraiser, and so we're giving money to the food pantry via, and so that's, that's where it gets very convoluted and confusing, so.
Well, I believe since it comes to the Cowan City Council, we pretty much could ask them for whatever we need, right? To make the decision, so it's, you know, it's whether or not we're going to agree to what they bring to us. So we do have the final say.
If they watch the tape, they'll hear our concerns. So they'll know in advance before August 1st.
They'll know.
We'll let them know.
Super. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion regarding Resolution 18-60-R? No, wait, wrong one. I moved, I moved ahead, I was thinking that one was not going to take very long.
I'll make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 18-31, proposing establishment of a special service area number 62 for Batavia Main Street.
Second.
We probably should do a roll call on that one.
Susan?
Yes.
Can I just ask, as part of the discussion and that, along with what Tony said, can we incorporate something in, at, when it comes to final approval, that we do have a formal notification process for those handful of residential to let them know what the process is?
Yeah, we can do that.
And then I guess...
Just so that it's spelled out a little bit clearer.
I should also ask, is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the council? I can't see from behind Scott, I don't know if anybody's out there.
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, roll call, please. Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Etac absent, and Stark?
Aye.
Okay, that one, that one carried, and so now we can move on to...
On the regular or consent agenda?
Put it on the consent.
Yeah.
All right, item number seven, Resolution 18-60-R, accepting a plan of dedication of a portion of Winter Green Terrace, Alderman Stark.
Okay, the city acquired Lot 5 and Rose Hollow subdivision as part of drainage improvement, and so part of this land has been declared surplus, and staff is working on selling the excess parcels. In addition, the land provides an opportunity to dedicate the land for standard cul-de-sac turnaround at the east end of Winter Green Terrace. While this cul-de-sac will not be constructed at this time, we are proposing to dedicate this right away now to facilitate the construction at some point. Once the cul-de-sac is constructed, we would vacate the area when, where the hammerhead turnaround is located currently, and staff recommends approval of this resolution approving the dedication, accepting the, accepting the plan of dedication. And the budget impact of this is about $500 for recording of the plan, and no staffing impact. Staff feels there are no cons. The dedication will dedicate the cul-de-sac right away for a future road termination improvement. And I know that Alderman O'Brien had some comments, and so does Salvati about this, so if you guys would like to speak to it or have questions.
Where did this come from?
Well, when we acquired the property to the east, it just seemed to be one of those things that, you know, since we now own it, it would be logical to dedicate the right of way for a future cul-de-sac, sort of like we did with Blue Bell, when Blue Bell was developed to the north. So this, this area doesn't really lend itself to a standard turnaround with the hammerhead, so since we had the land purchased, we felt that, you know, it would be an opportunity that someday, if we ever want to do that, that we could just terminate it in a cul-de-sac for easier turnaround radius.
So I guess, did we speak to any of the residents on Winter Green Terrace?
No, we did not.
So I have, and they were all opposed to it.
Okay.
And so I am definitely opposed to it. You know, to do it, you know, I understand you want to, you know, get it, at least get the ordinance going, but to, to the resolution going, I should say, but to get this going, you know, when we do come to it, I mean, they've, I mean, I, people who live right there have been there for 25 years, the neighbors of mine, the concerns are these. I mean, you say that there are no cons in your memo, and I think, I think we missed the point on that, you know? You know, a lot of trees, there's a lot of trees there, it's a wooded area. That wooded area protects the neighbors from a sound, it acts as a sound barrier during the summer months, okay? When we take those trees down to put this turnaround in, I guess what would happen then would be people driving around looking to get to Kirk Road from, you know, Woodland Hills Road, might say, hey, there's Kirk there, and it would just, you know, generate more traffic on a dead-end street. And that's, you know, we have children on the street, small children on the street, and so that, that in itself becomes somewhat of a safety issue. Also, you know, there's, on Kirk Road, you know, there's a pullout right, right there at the end of Winter Green, and it's been known to happen where people pull out and try to find their way through that area to, for whatever purposes, you know, maybe, you know, ill-gotten gains or whatever, you know, some nefarious means. So, you know, opening it up a little bit more just gives them more to see, and that in itself, again, is another safety issue. So I am strongly opposed to this. We've had it for 58 years that that's been there, and it's not bothered anyone. And so I would, I'd like to just put this to bed, and I'm going to vote no on it, of course.
Scott?
Just to echo what Mike's saying, is, you know, what you don't see there is Kirk Road is, you know, 20 yards past that. I think if this was in the middle of a neighborhood, you know, a wooded area, there was, it wouldn't be a big deal. The fact of the matter is, now you're thinning out that sound barrier, you're creating, you're creating a cul-de-sac for a purpose that if it's just easier to turn around, you got a hammerhead there, you can do a three-point turn, it's not a big deal. I just, to me, I just don't see benefit of going through this exercise, you know, unless there was some, we had to have access or something like that, I just, I just don't see it. And from, you know, the negatives that we're going to, we would incur by, you know, disrupting people's lives and all that, I just don't see it. So, you know, that having, having Kirk right there really complicates this. Again, if it was, if everything was considered, it was backed up to a cornfield, not a big deal, but, you know, that's a busy stretch, and, you know, when, you know, when lights go down at Pine and Kirk like they did today, you get a backup, you get lots of noise, you know, that becomes a problem.
Marty?
Yeah, so when I was talking with Mike about it, the things that jumped out in my mind with kind of what Mike's points were are priorities and necessity. There's not really a priority for this right now, and I don't see the necessity. The other, the points that Mike raises are pretty compelling to me, and I know this is just a dedication because there's nothing imminent, but the problem I have with when we decide things now for nothing imminent are, if we're all gone in a couple of years and somebody goes, well, it was dedicated for a reason, there must have been a reason for it, and then it just goes ahead and gets done without, I think it needs a break in between and just doing what Mike said, not do it right now, if there's a compelling reason at a later point, then we deal with it then.
Helen?
Guess I get to be on the other side of this. I have a real question is, does this make sense for our public works? I mean, does this make it easier to plow that street? Does this make it more convenient to use that street if it's a cul-de-sac that doesn't look like it's a through street?
Not necessarily. It's, it's, you know, right now, they just plow at the end of the street, and they just, that's where they load it into.
So they just leave it there.
So that's where they store the snow.
And then they have to back out of the street.
Well, they, no, there's two driveways that they, that's owned by the city, that
they can make a K.
Right, but they'd have to plow those.
They have to plow those, yes.
So, they couldn't leave, they wouldn't be able to leave the snow in that section. I mean, I guess that's the question I wanted to see if Gary could answer for me.
And some of the issues we have with the hammerheads, and this goes up and down Kirk Road, is the hammerhead rightaways extend way back into people's front yards. So, we actually, that's another item, is to vacate, or that's a previous item we did, is to vacate some of the hammerhead rightaway. Because we're literally, I think we had to repave someone's driveway, like 60 feet of their driveway. It literally goes back that far.
So, that hammerhead is actually the driveway for that property?
Right, yeah. The area, if that was an area of photo instead of a plat, their drive, their road doesn't fill up the whole rightaway. The road sits in the center, so the-
So, we're effectively plowing their driveway when we plow that street?
Public, yeah, it's public.
Because it's a public rightaway?
Yeah.
And I guess that was one of my thoughts was, is what's, what's, what would be the benefit to doing this?
Right now, I mean, right now, there's no, I mean, I agree with Alderman Stark, Aldermans, that right now, there's no immediate need, but again, it's, it becomes a, it becomes a desire to basically standardize, and remember, that's where the storm, next major stormwater project is going to occur.
Well, that was gonna be my next question, is are we taking those trees out of there anyway for stormwater management in that section?
Yeah, in all likelihood, yeah.
Not all of them.
What's that?
Not all of them.
Um, I mean, there's gonna be a good portion of them right there, that's right where the creek comes from.
That's where-
Right there. Where that road is, you're gonna be coming to the south also.
Yeah, the way the topography goes there.
You will not need to come to the south.
There, there is ability to come to the south and gain more stormwater storage.
Well, now, if we go to more stormwater storage, and so-
But that was the whole idea for buying that property, and that's why I'm asking these questions.
What is the plan? I mean, are we going with more stormwater storage?
So, we've met-
We're changing our mind on this.
It hasn't been changing our mind, this has been the plan from the beginning. We've met with Fermilab about expanding the base on the east side of Kirk Road and allowing for more storage on the east side of Kirk Road. They're on board with the concepts. We basically have to do some engineering in order to go back to them then with defined limits. On the west side of the road is where the structure, the control structure's gonna go.
The restrictor.
That's where the restrictor's going to go, and there's also room on the west side of the road for detention storage.
But the original, the original design, I thought, was the east side of Kirk Road on Fermilab property is where we were gonna be putting the detention pond, and the restrictor was going to be on the west side. And now, we're talking, well, now we're gonna do storage, so I just-
Yeah, we don't have to do storage on the west side, that's up to council. I'm just telling you there's room to do storage on the west side. And the more storage we can provide down there, the better the benefit for everyone along the way.
Scott?
I think we're, I mean, we're kinda getting sideways off of what's at hand, but I think just for future reference, if we decide that we need to look at detention, for whatever reason on that side, we need to have some sound mitigation.
Sure.
That's part of that, that can compensate for whatever needs to be removed, because-
Yeah, I'll point to the substations, like Cherry Park is a good example. Those would be great, those would be great sound walls down there, something like that.
Sure.
Yeah?
Because I just look to the future, and I know that probably the biggest issue in Ward 1 is gonna be stormwater. And if we have to access this, or if we have to come up with some different designs and work in here, we're not gonna wanna do it off of Kirk Road. It's gonna come in off of the street.
The grade from Kirk Road down to the bottom is very steep.
Right, so, to me, this just facilitates that, and if it configures the street to make it easier to maintain in the future, then we should plan for that now, so when that street gets rebuilt or even resurfaced, that's when we redo this.
That'll never happen. What?
Susan?
Scott, I'm sorry. Is 1338, is the hammerhead part of their driveway?
Yes. Yes, you can see here where it's kind of, the pavement color changes here. This one doesn't have it, but this is all part of the hammerhead and their whole driveway up to this color changes where the city maintains.
And where, do, do, we own the land to, between the end of the hammerhead and Kirk Road, or is that owned by the county?
Yeah, this is what we had purchased, this whole piece of land that, you know, extends all the way up to Blue Bell, behind the lots on Blue Bell, and then, you can see, oh, there you go.
There you go.
Okay, that's ours, okay. Okay, thank you. Wait, Scott?
Just real quick, just if, going back to, if we're talking about detention, that we might need that, and we need, we need to consider sound mitigation that we have to put in, we really, I'm still, and it makes my case even more, why we should not have a cul-de-sac there. Because that will take out even more and limit the amount that we'll be able to put in as far as, you know, as far as barrier goes. So, to me, it, you know, it just makes the case for not, not to do that.
Dave?
I think we oughta put this on hold. You know, we're doing an awful lot of if we do this and if we do that, that this might be a benefit. You got two aldermen that are sitting here that have talked to the residents that live on that street, that I don't see the pros outweighing the cons at all on this. We've got two aldermen that are objecting to it, and I'm gonna support them.
Okay, so, do we make a motion to table this? Do we make a motion to reject it? I mean, how should we handle this from a-
Why don't you table it?
I think if you table it, that would be fine. You know, we don't have to, you know, bring it up, and if it can, if somebody wants to bring it up at some point in the future, we can.
Okay.
You know, the plat's already done, so.
Okay, I make a motion that we table Resolution 1860-R, dedication of Wintergreen Terrace.
Second.
Motion by Stark, second by Salvati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, great.
All right, next item is item number nine, ordinance 18-40, grant of variance for detached garage at 836 Garfield Avenue. Andrew Browning is the applicant, Alderman Stark.
Yep, just waiting for it to load.
We have to go back to eight first.
Yeah.
I missed eight, okay, sorry.
Just the fence height.
All right, item number eight, 1839, grant of variance for a fence height at 1107 North Avenue. Eric Oja is the applicant, Alderman Stark.
Sounds good, just waiting on the internet. Okay, so, the, this ordinance would grant approval of a variance for a fence taller than allowed at 1107 North Avenue, which is the northwest corner of Birch Street. The zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on the 16th to consider this request. The zoning code limits fences in corner lots to a maximum height of three feet. The requested variance is allowing the corner side setback area along Birch Street to be four feet in height, and this height has been lowered from the previously requested six feet that was reviewed. And we have an illustration of what this would look like, and the owner explained that his dog can jump over the allowed three-foot fence and run into traffic, affecting the safety of his dog and others in the neighborhood. And locating a taller fence at the 30 foot set back at Birch Street would place the end of the fence in the middle of a window on the north-facing wall of his home and part of the rear yard outside of the fence. He notes that there are a couple examples of taller corner fences in his neighborhood. And so, when this went in front of the zoning border of a field, they found by a vote of one to five that the property can yield a reasonable return and be reasonably used as residential property without the requested variance. And the zoning board did not unanimously find that approval of the requested variance would not be a grant of special privilege and would not be a detriment to the neighborhood consistent with the required findings. The zoning board asked if he can, if a four-foot fence can contain his dog. The dog could not jump over a four-foot fence, and the zoning board noted that installing a four-foot fence where the three-foot fence is required per Mr. O's proposal may better balance his need for safety with neighborhood aesthetics. So, we can approve it as presented, which maximizes the size of the enclosed rear yard area and enhancing safety in the neighborhood. Cons would allow a taller fence than allowed along a portion. There's no budget impact for this, so there's no staff impact. And if we are to approve it now, it would appear on the June 18 city council member, meeting. It did, because of not finding in the affirmative for all findings of approval by a vote of zero to six, the zoning board of appeals failed to recommend approval of the variances. They noted its obligation to effectively recommend denial if all required findings cannot be met, but they reiterated its opinion that city council approved a four-foot fence where only a three-foot fence is allowed, that if we do, it can balance the applicant's desire for safety with neighborhood aesthetics. So, does anybody have any comments, questions about this? Elliot?
I'm just gonna say that obviously, I mean, this is in my ward, but I drive past all three of the houses that are being depicted in the snapshot here. The ones that are being used as examples of where there's already fencing that is not to the three-foot standard, they don't stick out like thumbs at all. I mean, they're perfectly fine. So, I, especially for the purposes of safety, whether it's for the dog or for the pedestrians that may be coming by, my dog has jumped the fence when I had a three-foot fence, I know exactly how that is. I'm in support of this, being the four-foot transition there.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Mark?
Yeah, I'd agree that, I empathize with that, because my dog does like to jump my three-foot fence, and I live on 31, so I'm fortunate that he hasn't run out there. But my fence is huge, so it cost me a fortune to make a four-foot fence. So, I empathize with this, and I would definitely support this.
Susan?
Dave?
Joel is the petitioner here?
Yes, he is here this evening.
I'm just wondering, I'll kick this idea out here. I, I'm splitting hairs, I don't have any problem with this. These corner lots have come up numerous times about the right way and the wrong way and the whatever way, because it's a corner lot, it's difficult to deal with. But since it seems as though the big concern here is the safety of when the dog could jump the fence and run out into the road or the public or what have you, I'm just wondering, because I walk by and have walked by a lot of these corner lots where the fences are even, you know, what have you, right up to the sidewalk, and when the dog charges at the fence, when you're walking by the fence, it's rather scary. And you just don't know if that dog's gonna jump the fence, or if the fence is secure or getting rotten and gonna fall over or whatever. So, I'm wondering if maybe there wouldn't be some concession here or compromise and maybe allow this to happen, but could the fence be held back four feet, say, from the sidewalk so that there is a little bit of buffer between the fence so that the fence isn't, and the dog isn't jumping up right next to you when you're walking along there? Again, I'm splitting hairs, I don't really care either way, but that's something that I have noticed and thought I'd bring up.
One of the questions I would have for this is, is one of the reasons that we keep the fence height at three feet is to be able to see over it at a corner? I mean, is there a safety concern in terms of vehicular traffic at a corner? Does it matter?
Well, in the, in the instance of if a neighbor, if the neighbor to the north here had a driveway right at this location, then, right now, our code allows the six-foot fence where it is shown right here. Allowing this particular fence really would have no effect on the visibility to a corner, and in most cases, allowing a six-foot fence to be adjacent to a street where we don't currently allow them, it wouldn't result in many instances where visibility would be impacted.
Susan, we got the resident, the petitioner, I believe, wants to speak.
You'd like to come up and, is this your dog in the Cubs jersey?
Yes, it is.
I have to vote against this because I'm a Sox fan.
It was a 50/50 shot, so.
I'm kidding.
To answer your question, that was actually brought up at the building, buildings board, and the reason that might not be able to happen is, they wanted, they made the comment to preserve, because I have very nice landscaping on that corner lot, to preserve the neighborhood, and if we were to move that last 30 feet and also that four-foot section that is suggested in closer towards my house and away from the sidewalk, it would honestly take away all that landscaping, I'd have to cut everything. I don't know if you can, I think there's a couple pictures in here that shows some of my landscaping, just to show you. That was really the only concern of the previous meetings board, that they enjoyed the landscaping that I had and brought to the, so, all this right here would be encompassed by that four-foot, because my property line goes like to this corner like right here. And I honestly, I already can put the six-foot fence up on all sides of my property that I share a neighbor with, and they're all in support of what I wanted to do, so. I totally agree with you, and in what I suggested for the four-foot setback from the sidewalk, I suggested when this landscaping ends right here, I could honestly do that. I don't have a problem with setting it back from the sidewalk, I just, it would take away from landscaping, I'd have to rip all this out. There's like very, very large evergreen bushes or shrubs.
I wouldn't, I'm not gonna press for it. I wouldn't want anything written in there where in the landscaping dies, you gotta move the fence or whatever.
Sure, yeah. We previously talked about this in the previous meeting, so I just wanted to share that with you. I'll go back to this picture.
Anybody else have any questions?
It's honestly very strange that in the code, it's written right now, I could put a fence all the way past my front, front door there, but I can't put the fence that I want right here. But I'll bring it back here.
As Alderman Brown said, these corner fences have always been, oh, it's so crazy. Every time that someone wants to put a fence up around a corner lot, we have the same exact discussion. So, Jeff, did you have any comments or anything about this? Okay, so.
With four feet, I'm having dogs and having them try to push the fence. I know all about that.
People just get cats, we'd be upset. Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion to recommend a city council ordinance 18-39, grant of variance for fence height at 1107 North Avenue?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meitzler, second by Uwer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So, this will be at the next city council meeting?
Yes, consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is item number nine, ordinance 18-40, grant of variance for detached garage at 836 Garfield Avenue, Alderman Stark.
Okay, so, on May 16th, zoning board of appeals had a public hearing to review a variance request. This would allow a construction of a garage setback less than the required six feet from behind the front plane of the house. The zoning board determined that due to the unique shape of the zoning lot and the depth of the required driveway, there was practical difficulty in complying with the zoning code. And so, the zoning board of appeals, I don't see their ruling in here.
Yeah, they were in favor.
Oh, here it is. They moved it forward to us at a six to zero vote. The pros for doing this, it allows the applicant to proceed with his proposed detached garage. The con is the approval places the additional building bulk closer to the front property line than allowed by code, obviously. There's no budget impact, there's no staffing impact. And is there anything you wanted to add to this? Is there any?
I guess just to say that, basically, the property is currently a flag lot, and it's one of the reasons our code does not, any, doesn't no longer allow flag lots, it's just there's a lot of difficulties with how they're configured and how they're enforced the rules with. The applicant has provided a modified plan, since he's been working on the building permits middle, that increases the size of the garage by approximately five feet. Because this variance is a variance from the separation of the garage from, in relation to the house and not to a property line, that would require adjustment of the variance request. Typically, if it, if it was a setback variance in terms of the property line, that would be an issue, but because of what the change is, it would be allowed with how the variance is written right now. So, I just wanted to bring that up, and we'll put a revised drawing in the ordinance for when that goes.
Anybody, any questions of your on this one? Marty?
Just a comment, I, this is right, basically, in my backyard, I've met with Mr. Browning over it a few months even before he had even put it in yet. So, I know what he's doing and what his goal is, and I fully support it, because he's doing nothing but improving this, this property, and it's going to have an effect on the property values in that neighborhood of just looking really nice, and he's going to be able to utilize his property in a much more meaningful way.
Anyone else? Is Mr. Browning here? Does he want to address the council? Come on up.
Not, there's not much more to say. Not, there's not much more to say. I've been trying to be proactive before I even start this. I reached out to both Aldermans and my ward, just to get their intake and their input on it. I've come down to the city to make sure of my intentions, and, you know, as they said, I just, there's a shed there that I'm replacing that the previous owner put there. Unfortunately, I haven't think, you see right here, this is that shed, kind of, you kind of see the part of, but you can see this water, and it doesn't take a huge rain to do this. So, for whatever reason, the elevation here is almost like sunk, so it's not technically a floodplain, but this is very often what it looks like, even like in the wintertime and whatnot. And, I mean, everything in the shed is essentially underwater in times happen. So it's going to allow me, and I know that the city, I've been working with the engineering department too, to make sure that we can fix the grading along with this issue too. So, again, just really just trying to better the property around, so.
And can you do me a favor and state your name for the record? I'm sorry.
No, Andrew Browning.
I'm sure we have it, but we just want to make sure.
Andrew Browning.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I think it's a great case for somebody improving their property.
Yeah, right.
So, would someone like to make a motion to recommend a council ordinance 18-40 grant of approval for variance for a detached garage at 836 Garfield Street? Andrew Browning, applicant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Salvati, second by Callahan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So this will be at the next city council meeting also?
Correct.
Which is Monday night. Okay, thank you.
Consent agenda.
Consent, sure.
Dave, quick question. On the last one, that needs a two-thirds, does that, can that go on?
Ah, you're right.
This one can, but I know on the other one.
Oh, that's right, because it didn't go through with a positive recommendation from zoning board of appeals.
Good catch.
Okay. Item number 10, ordinance 18-45 approving a conditional use for an animal shelter for Starfish Animal Rescue, 167 Oswald Avenue, Alderman Stark.
Sounds good. Okay, so, what this ordinance does, it grants approval of a conditional use permit to Starfish Animal Rescue to continue to operate at 167 Oswald Avenue. Starfish has been located on the property for approximately two years, and after staff learned of its being there, staff sought their supplemental on approval of a conditional use permit. There are no building or site improvements proposed. The subject property is currently zoned light industrial, and it allows animal shelters within the city council, or in that area, with city council approval of a conditional use. So, the motion, or the ordinance before us is to be able to approve it, that conditional use in light industrial. This is a, not a traditional animal shelter, it stores animal supplies for distribution to those people in the area who are fostering animals for rescue. Animal intake occurs every other Saturday morning, and all dogs and most cats are placed in foster care by the end of the day. Some unplaced cats may be kept in the facility throughout the weekend before being placed in foster care. And there is a lawn area on the property to walk dogs. There are volunteers on site for intake placement days to facilitate operations. Our code does not have a defined land use for animal rescue, the defined use of an animal shelter can apply to the services Starfish does provide. There's intake activity only on weekends, parking impact is minimal, and interaction with other tenants is minimal. Plan commission had a public hearing on June 6th, and commission made affirmative findings related to conditional use, and they're included in the ordinance. And our alternatives, of course, are to approve this and let them continue to operate. There's no negatives that staff has identified. If we don't approve it, they will have to vacate that property, and it will take the animal humane service from the community. There's no budget impact, there's no staffing impact. And so, does anyone have any questions? And I do believe that Laura Leckelt, close, Leckelt, is here, if anyone has any questions. Anybody have any questions? Laura, would you like to come up and talk about it a little bit?
Like you said, we've been there for two years, and that, we, originally, when we moved in there, thought we had approval. We went to the village several times, and they said the only permit we need would be if we put signage up there, which we did not. So, once it came to light that we needed a permit, we went and filed it for it right away. We've never hidden complaints from any neighbors, whether it be residential or businesses. We do use the building every other weekend. We transport anywhere from 100 to 200 animals that come to the facility, they're walked, fed, watered, and then they go their separate ways, either to other rescues or shelters or to our foster homes that are within the community.
Any, any questions, Laura?
Didn't you come down here once before?
I did.
And talk about this at one time?
Well, that's how we got outed out, was when we went to the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah.
So that's how we were, you know, again, we became members of the Chamber of Commerce, they had a great event for us that we benefited from, and then that's when this all came to light.
Yeah, I'm supportive of what you do, so.
Thank you.
I think too, I wanted to say, you know, having three dogs that I have are all rescues. I think the fact that they've been there as long as they have, and we haven't had a complaint about them, nobody even knew that they were really there, I think speaks volumes to how they run it. So, I think that that speaks about all we need to know for conditional use.
Is, is Oswald, the, the street where Rubicon was going to build, is that the street down there?
Yep.
Okay, okay. I couldn't, like, couldn't remember.
Down on the other side. Yeah.
Yeah, Bond, it goes into Oswald.
And it'll loop down there.
Okay. Okay. So, anyone else have any questions of staff or the applicant? Okay. So, would someone like to make a motion to send ordinance 18-45 conditional use permit for animal shelter Starfish Animal Rescue to under, rescue at 167 Oswald Avenue? Laura Leckelt for Starfish Animal Rescue, applicant.
So moved.
Motion by Wolf, second by Meitzler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consent agenda, and that'll go to city council Monday night. So, we're all set, thank you. All right, next item then is item 11, an ordinance 18-41 proposing the establishment of a special service area number 63 in the city of Batavia, and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in conjunction with the Prairie Commons subdivision residential development, Alderman Stark.
Okay. As we have done for many other development areas in town, this is a backup SSA, so that it's put in place in case the homeowners association dissolves or fails to maintain the common area. And these SSAs remain a non-active or a non-lebbed state appearing on tax bill with a tax rate of zero. And the backup SSAs would only be activated after an outreach when HOA fails to result in the HOA completing necessary maintenance, and then a levy would be made to reimburse the city for repair or maintenance actions. State law specifies procedure, and the city council first has to approve an ordinance to establish the SSA. Then there's a hearing date, then there's a form of notice and a description of parcels to be included. And then after the hearing, there's a 60-day period that must be provided to allow a petition objecting to the establishment. There has to be 51% of the property owners of record and 51% of the registered voters on the petition. And then it needs to be filed, and then if it's not filed, then the city can establish the SSA. So this has a long process, and this is one of the reasons it's coming to us now. And so, the pros for this, of course, are that it will create this backup SSA, consistent with previous direction of city council through the approval of the annexation agreement and city policy to establish these SSAs. Staff hasn't identified any cons, there's minor costs for publication and mailing for the proposed service area. And the timeline for this, the passage of the attached ordinance will set forth a specific timeline for ultimate review and approval of the proposed SSAs. And the goal of this timeline is to have the SSA in place prior to the transfer of any property, either residential or commercial, to a third party. So, does anyone have any questions? This starts now, today, and it would finally be recorded October 19th, so it is a long process. Scott?
What is the, the western boundary of the SSA there?
So the western boundary would be the subdivision property, so it would end at the east side of Kirk Road.
Okay.
Now's the time.
Yeah, and I'll say, we have the process, because we're only dealing with one property owner in this case, rather than Main Street where there's many more properties, the notices to one property, the, the notice in the paper is a little bit shorter because it's dealing with subdivision lots, so that's why the costs are probably a lot more smaller than the Main Street one. And I did want to say, we are working with the applicant on, basically, creating a waiver of their objection to the SSA, to formalize that, and with our receipt of that, we would be able to shorten it up by, basically, recording the ordinance before the 60-day period is over for objection.
Okay, great. Marty?
Just a small point. The, the item is for Prairie Commons, but on the agenda it says Tanglewood.
The file attached, or the file name on the attachment is Tanglewood, but all the documents are Prairie Commons.
Yes, but if somebody was, they'll be fixed on the council.
Okay. Does anyone have any additional questions to this? And I don't think there's anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this? No.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I was informed by the engineering staff this afternoon, we've been having quite a discussion with the U.S. Post Office about what the address of this should be, because under some old postal maps that were out there, this was all addressed in the city of Aurora. And we just got notification this afternoon that, thanks to some individuals in the Batavia post office, we were successful in getting all the new houses that are to be built there addressed at 60510. So, that's somewhat important, because when you go to do such things as argue about your property taxes with the assessor, if you say, well gee, I live in Aurora, well, you don't really live in Aurora, but you live in Batavia, well, how can I live in Batavia if I'm addressed in, there's a lot of, we've been through this once or twice in some small areas, and at the end of the day, we've always been able to talk the post office into changing it to our sitting limits, so that Batavia people truly live in Batavia. But this was one, until today, was hanging out there, and we just got notice that they have agreed to transfer it all to Batavia.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
So, would someone like to make a motion to recommend ordinance 1841 proposing the establishment of an SSA number 63 for Prairie Commons subdivision residential development to city council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would someone like to make a motion to recommend an ordinance 1842 proposing the establishment of a special service area number 64 for Prairie Commons subdivision commercial development?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, resolution 18-73-R, authorizing execution of a contract for Fox River, for the Fox River Utility Stabilization Construction with Copan-Haver Construction, for an amount not to see $207,242. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is for a section, I believe, right over here, behind us, just to the south of us, for what'll be, become a limestone wall, but to protect the utilities that are along that west river bank. Rahad?
Thank you so much. As you see, we opened the bid last week, and we got six bidders bid on this project. We were quite surprised by the span of the bid numbers, the lowest bid at $188,000 for alternative one to $660,000, that's almost three and a half times more. Same thing with the base bid. I did talk to the lowest bidder, Copan-Haver Construction, they're currently working for us at the Area 3 cemetery work. He was a little surprised too, that why the second bidder was that much higher, but he said that he will proceed with the work, he will, he will go ahead and perform the work for the city. So, so he has given us the green light that he's, he's going to honor the bid price and go forward. So, that's why it's in front of you. We are recommending the alternative one. The reason that we did two alternatives, because we were not sure how the base bid and alternative will differ in cost-wise, but we have the money budgeted, and it's only $10,000 more. Limestone wall will be much more nicer looking, it will give, give a better scenic view, if you want to say, for those portion, and also, the maintenance of limestone wall is really, really minimum. Gabion baskets, you'll, those steel iron things that holds the Gabian, the stones, they rust out over the years, and you'll have to replace those. So, the consultant also feels that limestone wall will be a better option for $10,000, so. So we are recommending to the council to award the alternative one.
Dave? So how much vegetation are we going to noticeably see removed behind the buildings over here?
So only this building, I think, I believe there are like six trees that are going to be gone, behind the Creamery Building. The landowner actually wants those to be gone too. That's why he signed, which is the next item, he signed the agreement, easement agreement, because he, he doesn't like those trees. It's a nuisance for him over, during.
So this is being done in conjunction with the protection for that sanitary sewer there?
Yes, yes.
And who's doing the inspection of what work they're doing? Is that going to be done in-house, or?
So, we are actually, currently, we have requested proposal from consultant. Gary and I, we kind of looked at all the projects that going on at this time, in-house. We have only one inspector who is doing, you know, sidewalk program, all the driveway inspection, all other inspection, all the developments that's going on. So we don't see that we will be able to handle it in-house. So, so we are getting proposals, which we'll probably bring it back to if it is more than $20,000 proposal.
Yeah, I think this, this, a project like this requires some very close inspection on it, because certainly, you're going to be dealing with an awful lot of force there with that river, and if those stone walls aren't put in there properly, we're going to be dealing with it 10 years from now. So, certainly support some good inspections on this.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Is the, so the limestone wall, that's going to kind of mirror more like the Clark Island wall that is out on the north edge of that, it's going to look like that, right?
Pretty close to that.
Well, yeah, not probably as big.
The one just south of the bridge?
Well, it's south of the main street office. But north of the pedestrian spot.
It's a stone material, it's not a retaining wall.
Right.
It's not a cast-in-place wall.
Okay.
It's a stone wall, right?
So it's a block?
It's a block.
Set up, okay.
It's not, it's not a block, it's natural stone.
Limestone.
It's not fabricated block.
Right. Okay.
I think there are some pictures over there, I believe, in the plans.
Okay, I see, I see what's there.
Yep.
Good, so as long as there's rocks that fall down into the river there, then I can fish by that.
So I guess, Rahad, you know, if I could one more, the reason why I asked how much vegetation we were going to noticeably see removed, while we're in there working, has there been given any thought of doing some further cleanup and, and making it look better down there too? With, if you're saying we're just going to remove six trees, do we need to remove eight or nine?
The, the, the scope of this project was to just stabilize the utilities. We didn't really go into that scope, so, so this construction project doesn't involve removing more trees or landscaping, you know, in-growth, to do, to do any beautification of the river.
I guess I could ask the question then, why didn't we? Because the big thing that we're all talking about now is, is beautifying our river banks along with the stabilization. So, why didn't we think outside the box a little bit and say we need to remove a little bit more?
Actually, council did. If you, if you remember, it's, I think, back in 2016, I don't remember exact date, but I think it was September or so, we did bring a beautification concept to, in front of the committee, and the cost estimate at that point for that project was $1.5 million.
Yeah, I'm not talking about doing a major, major deal, I'm just saying, is there a little bit more that we should be looking at there while we're doing this project?
Again, this project was based on that discussion, $1.5 million, that's when committee gave a direction that just do the utility stabilization, don't do anything else, and, and the plans were developed based on that.
I get your point, I don't think you're getting mine, that, you know, if we're back there working, should we be thinking outside the box a little bit?
Definitely, definitely, we can, we can look into that. The, I mean, if committee wants us to look at particular areas, we can, we can look into that and, and maybe talk to the contractor and get a price for that, and see whether we can fit it in within the budget or bring it to you, if, if there is a cost that is going to be over the budget, budgeted item. We can definitely do that. Do you, do you have anything in mind, which side or which area you want to concentrate or overall?
Rahad, all I'm saying is while we're back there working, right now, it looks like a jungle and a mess, okay? So while we're back there working, should we do something more? Have we thought about that? You know, are there more trees that we, should we move? Should we do some trimming? That's all I'm asking. Should we look at that? Because once, once this work is done, are we going to look at it and say, well, that's great, but why didn't we do? but why didn't we do this? That's all I'm asking. Should we look at that?
Elliot?
I would just say, I mean, I think I hear what you're, what you're trying to say, Dave, is, you know, while, while we've got the workers back there, you know, maybe it makes sense to do a little bit more to really make it look like the other side of the river. I guess when I'm just looking at this one, I'm already thinking that, you know, to their credit, they did kind of make a bit of an adjustment by going into the limestone as opposed to the, I'm going to butcher the term, Gabian baskets. I think that looks much better, at least from the pictures that I'm seeing right there. I think that looks much more in touch with our town and, you know, what we like to praise on the historic attributes of the city. So if it starts the cleanup back there and it came in under budget, I'm good. I would say let's, let's support it and let's get this underway and let's start it. And if we wanted them to look, to see and charge him with, you know, doing a little bit more additional cleanup, let's, let's get that underneath a separate, you know, ask.
Gary?
Yeah, just a couple of points. First of all, this is private property and we're getting an easement back here to work. So we can't just go off on a tangent and do work that we think needs to be done when it's somebody else's property. And second of all, as Rahad stated, we received pretty specific scope from council to come back with a specific project. And again, I don't think it's within staff's purview to go off on a tangent and say, oh, well, you know, we thought we'd do this and it's going to cost another $100,000. That's just not within our, our realm. So we followed the scope, the direction that was given to us by the committee and we're working and following the, with an easement to the private property. And that's kind of where we landed with this project.
Dan?
We talked about that at strategic planning last night. So I'm sure we'll be putting together some sort of plan very soon for beautification. We didn't give any directions.
That was going to be my comment. I mean, this to me is utility stabilization. It's not beautifying the river. I think to beautify the river, there's a couple of buildings that need to change position or change place over there before we beautify that section of the river. So that's a whole nother discussion. This is something that to me is more of a stopgap Band-Aid and we're going to make the Band-Aid look nice.
And I also think, you know, when we start going past and saying, well, did we think about this? You know, all I hear is the dollar or the printing machine down in the basement of City Hall trying to crank out more money to pay for this. Because if we remember, when we went through the budget process, we weren't allowing extra budget for these things. So we have, we gave staff, you know, staff brought us back, something that came out of last year's budget moved into this year's budget and they're sticking to it. I mean, we are, they're doing exactly what we're asking of them, so, yeah.
But, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, and to kind of reiterate your point on that, I remember it because I was the one that said we should pull the money out of the reserves for it because it was specific in nature for, we did the, we did the whole look at the up and down. But we said, we made the value judgment of, we need to do something with that. And since reserves are a rainy day fund, we said, let's purposefully use our reserves for that. And I think it was $200,000, $250,000 that we had allocated for it and it's kind of coming in under it. So there may be some in the future, but I think like what Rahad and Gary said, we gave specific, this is emergency, this is rainy day fund money that we're using to stabilize it. So we're not pulling the wires and the items out of the river when it floods.
Mike?
Just, and I get that and I, and I understand that we gave them specifics. But when you, you then go into it and you break ground and you, you're in it and we think, you know, could take a little beautification for a lot less money now that we're here than just putting up the stone and standing back when everything is done and saying, oh, maybe we should plant a few more trees. Well, now you, you, there's a remobilization cost. It's just, it's added cost. And if we were under budget, it may have just behooved us. I mean, we have talented people on staff who could have said, you know, let's just ask a question. And I, and I get it, but I mean, we were, we were cutting everything in the budget last year. But it's, sometimes you just gotta force the little things just to save some money. But if we don't do it, if we don't do it either, also. It's just sometimes we, we should look at the whole picture. And it's difficult. You guys have it tough because we're pulling you this way and that way. I know it, but that's your job.
And just to keep in mind, this is a specific plan that was developed, presented to the Army Corps of Engineers and IDNR. And they gave permit for specifically what has been shown on the plan. So if we do something different, those may have implication, you know. I don't know, taking out another tree or two may not be, but if we go down the road more, that could flag a lot more different things.
End up down a rabbit hole.
Ellen, I think Jeff had to come in too. Marty?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, so along kind of the point that everybody's saying, we did what, they did what we wanted them to do. We didn't, they didn't go outside of the scope because I don't think they should. If what we should be doing now is saying, it came in under budget by $50,000-some thousand, do we want to have them give, provide them the direction and say, you've got a little bit of money extra that we had budgeted for it? Do you want to see what they can, what they can do with it at this point and provide the direction for that area?
Doesn't, but per Rahad, we have a, we have a permit from the Army Corps and, you know, an IDNR.
Anything from, in their purview, we can't change now. The permit we have says we can do this. But he was just saying, if it's talking about a few trees, I'm not saying to spend the $50,000, go and just have, give direction to staff to ask. If they can't do it, they can't do it. If they can, bring back a proposal.
I didn't mean to blow this thing up. I just, you know, my, my point was, if we're back there working and there's some tree trimming that we ought to be doing while we're back there so it doesn't fall in the river and it makes everything look nicer, shouldn't we be taking a look at that? That's my point.
Isn't it? But it's not our property, isn't that what we've just been told?
Gary answered that.
Right.
Yeah, I'd just like to make the observation. Chris Kedworth and I are working on putting some new things on the city website. And one of the things that we're looking to do is a thing we're calling Batavia Then and Now, in which we have some very interesting photographs of how the town looked and then how it looks today. And a lot of these are very positive, going in the right direction type of things. Like we got a great shot of Houston Street in 1968 when it was a dirt road and feast oils tanks are sitting in the middle of the road of what's there. And then we got a beautiful shot of it with all these bicycles and people using it and just showing you how things have changed. Well, I happen to know that we've got some really great shots of this particular piece of property that you're talking about when it was owned by Batavia Body Company. And it was a grassy, grassy knoll out there that they tenderly cut every week. And they had a side door that came off the building. And at lunchtime, a bunch of the guys in the plant would get their fishing poles out. They'd come out the side door and they'd sit on the limestone wall there and they'd fish. And it was a very pretty sight. So we may get the opportunity to let present-day Batavians see how that used to be. And I would think that community reaction is going to be, well, my goodness gracious, we ought to return that to the way it didn't look 50 years ago versus the way it's all cluttered up there today. Because that's one of them that somehow, it's right there smack dab, right in the middle of town, but it got away from us and we lost control over it. And it became an overgrown jungle. And what used to be a platter of just plain green grass, cut every week and looked meticulous and was really a neat little addition onto the side of an old factory building that was later tore down and replaced by what's there now.
There were stairs going down to it, weren't there, from the bridge?
Yeah, not from, from the building, not from the bridge.
Yeah.
Yep.
Susan?
I, I just can't help but observe what our conversation would be like if all the, if we were now having this discussion that our engineer's estimate was $234,000 and the lowest closest bid was $314,000. So we're actually having a good discussion versus, Rahad, why the heck did you estimate this?
Okay. So are we ready to move this along? Any care to make a motion to recommend this to council?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chanet, second by Meisler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, the next item is yours also, which is item 14, Resolution 18-54-R, authorizes an execution of a construction easement with the property owners at 33 North Island Avenue.
Okay, this is an easement agreement for the previously mentioned work alongside the river behind this building. And this is for the term of one year, correct?
It goes till June 30th, 2019, just because we want to make sure that the landscaping and all other things has been established.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody care to make a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Stark, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
The easement on, easement on consent and then the other one, can we put that on?
Want to talk about it?
Yeah, because it's right, right in the middle of downtown and we're going to have stuff going on in the river. People are going to want to know what it's about.
Good idea. All right, we're skipping item number 15 and we're going on to item number 16, which is discussion on the North Batavia Dam ownership.
Yeah, so just to provide an update, at the last meeting, it was requested to identify an attorney who could provide us with an opinion about, take a look at the documents that we have and search the title history to give us another opinion on whether or not there is a basis under which City of Batavia could disclaim ownership of the Batavia Dam. And the individual identified and recommended both by our city attorney, Kevin Drendel, also community development director, Scott Buning, as well. Lucy Atack contacted me and said that she also has had prior experience with Bruce performing work for their properties. He's very well-regarded in this area. And so I would recommend that we, in the event that we want this second opinion, that we would hire Bruce Goldsmith to perform that work. I've provided him with the documents indicated here as well as the previous opinion that was provided by city attorney Kevin Drendel. He's reviewing those documents right now and I've asked him to provide us with an estimate. But I just wanted to see if you approved of his qualifications to perform the work and if maybe you could give me authorization in the event that I feel that he's providing us with a reasonable quotation for such work that I can just go ahead and sign the engagement letter with him and have him provide the opinion.
Okay.
About how much is it going to cost? I mean, do we have an idea in terms of, is it a $10,000 thing? Is it a 20, is it a 5?
So my conversation with him is that my expectations are that it should be a less than $5,000 project. And he has not, he still needs to make that estimation himself. He said that he had one of his associates who was doing a little bit of preliminary research on it that was necessary in order to provide us with that type of estimate.
Perfect. I always say, give authority up to $10,000 then when he comes back. And if it's above that, come, come back. That's what I would recommend.
I think we need to answer this question. And I think it's just, once and for all, we need to answer that question. And then regardless of what the answer is, then we can move forward.
Okay, so I have a question about that, Ellen, in your opinion and in other people's opinion, you know, Dave and Marty, you know, people have been outspoken about not owning the dam. So if we get a second opinion and the second attorney comes back and says, yes, you do own the dam, then do we find a third attorney that's going to say it? Do we get a judge to rule on this? What do we do to finalize this and say, it's your dam, dammit?
I think this guy here is a very talented guy. You can see he's, he's very accomplished. I think what he tells us is what we do. We can't keep searching.
I think like any other property that's out there, if you have a question, you don't have an answer, you don't have a coordinated answer, you pay somebody to give you that answer one way or the other. So then you have the answer.
Elliot?
Can I ask a question then on the flip side of that? We have our own city attorney who has said, it looks like we own the dam. If Mr. Goldsmith comes back and says, no, you may not own the dam, where do we think we're going to go then?
Dan?
I apologize, I wasn't here for the previous discussion. I would have absolutely put my foot down and said, this is our dam. I cannot believe that we're still talking about this. $5,000, if that's how much it would cost to hire this attorney, let's put that into a fund so that I can pay for the electricity to light the warning signs in perpetuity. Let's spend $5,000 on more beautiful signs. I believe that our attorney did a good job in explaining that this is our dam. And the analogy I came up with is a game of hot potato. If you pass that hot potato just because you want to pass it to somebody else and they don't take it, it is still yours. This is our dam. We did not pass the hot potato.
I would say that title work, it's pretty evident too that we own a dam. I mean, it's, they just write in there. Am I right?
And our city administrator is an attorney too and he thinks, yeah, so.
I just won't want to waste money if we don't have to. But I could see the second opinion if we need as well, but.
Well, Dan, I, I'm not going to get into the big debate again tonight. As I said at the last meeting though, I'm not going to take up any more of this council's time. I think we gave some direction to the city administrator. She's done what we gave her direction to do. I think we should vote on whether or not we want her to follow through with this direction.
In real estate, title work is so black and white, there's very little to debate. So it just feels like, like we're wasting our time. I would not support that, but.
Marty?
Yeah, I think since I did bring it up, because I am of course okay with the dam ownership. But there is enough anecdotal evidence from verbal transactions and so on, so forth, that we owe it when we're going out to try to find a final, a final, putting our foot down on it and saying, now, we can keep saying it, but it's not a legal opinion. It's just our opinion. And it needs to be removed from us because if we're all respecting each other's opinions on it, we aren't conclusive on what it is. And it shouldn't be left to us. While titling is black and white, we're not title people. None of us are. And there is enough anecdotal questions about what Dave has brought up that step back and look at it from a further 30,000-foot view to properly plan. If the lingering question that every time going forward, it's not settled amongst ourselves, it's not settled then with the public, if it's not settled with the public meaningfully, then we're going to be talking about it with residents, we're going to have misinformation out there, we're going to have unsettled, Nick brought up the, show me the title and I'll be glad to sign off on it. And it's maybe, we don't necessarily have the smoking gun. I think what we're trying to accomplish with this is to put the foot down and say, we've got a smoking gun.
We do, it's the title search. It's ours.
Yeah, I, I review title searches every day. And I, very rarely is there, I don't know, there's very rarely is mistake on ownership. Never. I have never seen a mistake on ownership.
And our intent, our intent was to give the dam away. I mean, I was here during that. But it didn't happen. I don't dispute that and I really didn't mean to ask the question that was going to spin us for the next half hour on the same circle. I'm still going to support, as I did in the last go around, if, if this is what it's going to take to put closure on this issue, if $5,000, you know, on somebody's, an external opinion is going to get us a second no, then I think that's $5,000 well spent, said and done. There should be no more refuting and as a council, we should all agree to move on. I'm just asking the question to make sure that we're prepared. If this comes back and we get now an opinion balancing, where are we going from that?
And I think too, with the background that I saw from the little research I did on him, he should be able to tell us what the next step would be. Do we have to go and sit down in front of a judge in a district court with somebody from the state and say, we told you, we wanted you to take it and you didn't, you didn't take it?
Then we should spend our $5,000 on that.
I think we got to look at, same, we looked, we looked at the electric. You know, we, we didn't want to leave any stone unturned. And so we hired somebody to give their opinion in it. He came back with his opinion. We could have said, we want you to do more, but we respected the work that he did because they're the professionals and that subject was closed.
So Dave, if this comes back and he says, yes, you do own the dam, will you finally say that, yes, we do own the dam?
I've already told you I would. I've already, I've already said, if the majority says that we own the dam and if we hire an attorney, as Marty has suggested, that comes back and says that we- attorney, as Marty has suggested, that comes back and says that we've got documentation that says we own the dam, I'll concede that we own it. Show me the title.
Show me the title.
I'm holding you to that.
Alright, you got direction? You got direction?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Where are we at then? We're on item number 17. Resolution 18-74-R approving an intergovernmental agreement with King County Forest Preserve for dam signage and lighting.
This is the next step in complying with the insurance requirements of having signage and lighting on the dam. This would be the forest preserve granting the city permission to install various signage and lighting on their property. The city would agree to install, maintain, replace, remove the signs in perpetuity. And the city also agrees to indemnify the forest preserve. Well, in my mind, it is our dam, so that's why I'm saying we're gonna vote on it. Gary, do you have any?
This is the third and the final agreement that we would need to approve. We've already approved with the Park District and the challenge building was brought to committee. So this is with the Forest Preserve District. This has been prepared by Kevin Drendel, reviewed by the Forest Preserve District's attorney, also reviewed by their board. So at this point in time, it's ready for your consideration.
Anybody have any comments?
I'm going to support this. Again, like I said the last time, until, I'm supporting it strictly for the safety of our residents and for people. It still hasn't been proven yet that we own the dam. I know some people don't agree with me, but I, until we get it from that, from Mr. Goldsmith, we don't own the dam. But I'll do this only, support this only for the safety of the residents.
Anybody else? Anybody care to make a motion? So I recommend, motion by McFadden, second by Serone. Do roll call on this.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Atack absent, Stark?
She just stepped down, if you want to come back there.
I'll go, I'll call her back. I'll roll slow. Chancet? Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Nope.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Nice timing.
Motion carry.
Alright, goes on to city council, the positive recommendation. Item number 18, resolution 18-72-R approving a contract with Parven and Claus Sign Company for the construction of North Batavia Dam signage and lighting plan for the amount not to exceed $71,403.15.
Yeah, let me get this thing to load again. I just cleared it. Okay, this is for the lights and the signs on the dam. $71,000. Not happy, but, wanna go ahead and explain this to me? Gary?
So we went out for public bid on May 1st. Almost 30 contractors received bid packets. Three contractors ended up submitting bids. And I indicated in the memo, the reason why we've actually, the bid opening was May 31st and we're only coming to tonight is the fact that there was an issue with one of the bids. We've been in consultation with Kevin Drendel as to how to handle that issue. Graphic House failed to comply with sections 8, 11, and 13 of the instructions to bidders. They actually submitted a lump sum bid for this project. The bids were set up to be a unit cost bid. And for those of you who kind of maybe not know how that works, if, I'll use rock excavation as an example. We may encounter five feet of rock excavation in this project, or we may encounter 50 feet of rock excavation in this project. And if it's a unit cost, we will pay accordingly. We'll either pay five feet to the contractor or we'll pay 50 feet to the contractor. Under a lump sum, you just pay the contractor a total lump sum price. You may look at the lump sum and say, hey, that was 54,000. That's much lower, why don't we just go the lump sum route? Problem is that that contractor in correspondence with him replied back to us, which said, well, yeah, if we get 50 feet of rock, then we'll have to renegotiate. And then staff said, well, no, that's not how it's gonna work. It's gonna, it's gonna be a lump sum price, because that's what you bid. So that's why in the end, we said he was not responsive from that perspective and we decided to reject, reject his bid. It wasn't an all-inclusive, like typically you would do a lump sum and that would be, that'd be the bid. So, that leads us to Parven Claus. I did check references. They have performed projects for other communities and received very good references from those communities. If you look at, I will reference you to their bid, it's in your packet, but I'll just call attention to two, to two items. One is clearing and pruning, sign company. I don't think they really want to do much clearing and pruning, because they bid $2,500 for each location to clear and prune. And basically that means, you know, cutting branches in order to make the signs visible. Talking internally, first of all, we're gonna try and locate these signs to minimize clearing and pruning. And second of all, depending on the nature of the clearing and pruning, it's something we could do in-house. And Scott Haines and I have had that discussion. So at $2,500 apiece and eight of them in the contract, that's $20,000 right there that I think we can, you know, recapture, and then again, as we go forward. The second item is rock excavation, I just mentioned that. We don't know at this point, I will tell you with 100% certainty, that along the west edge of the river, right at the north end of the, by the gazebo up here, that's all rock. I mean, you guys, you've been out there, you know that that's rock excavation. No doubt about it. You go onto the banks of the river and you go farther north, I'm not sure if we're gonna get hit rock, because you may get into soil over there. So that's, the rock excavation remains a little bit of an unknown. That's why we have a unit price contract. That's $20,000 also. So I don't know if we'll have $20,000 of rock excavation or if we'll end up with $15,000 of rock excavation. We will know once the contract is completed. Hence, again, a reason for a unit cost contract. We are recommending to go forward with this, with this resolution. We only have $40,000 in the budget between drainage and electric for this project, so this will exceed that budget amount. That budget amount was given, estimated for us by the WBK Engineering last fall, when we were first putting it together, the 2018 budget. So again, we'll just have to go into reserves or extras in those budgets in order to accommodate this. But we still feel it's important to go forward, given the potential liability and the need to get signage and lighting up at this time to warn the public. So we're recommending 18-72-R.
Okay. Any questions?
Ellen?
Dave?
So this is all still being done so we can get the dam insured, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And the dam is not insured yet?
That's correct.
And it will be when this is done?
Yes.
And there's no if, ands, buts about that? It will be? That they're not gonna have a reason not to insure it?
That is correct. We have spoken with them. They have the WBK Engineering Dam Inspection Report. And they noted to us that so long as we completed the public safety items that were recommended as part of that report, that they would insure the dam.
And this satisfies that?
Yes.
What's that insurance gonna cost us? I don't remember.
I don't remember either, because we had it for a year and then they dropped it.
Right.
I don't remember what it was. But we can make a note of that and notify you before city council. And in fact, that's why we had that meeting with them. We actually had a meeting, not just a couple of emails, we actually had a meeting with them to sit down and talk about those questions that you just raised and got assurances from them that that's how this would go.
Ellen, I'm still not gonna support it. I, you know, I still, I'm gonna vote no for everything that comes up with this until I have to vote yes for who owns it. And now we're over budget.
And that was gonna be my thing, is I, you know, I looked at the numbers, especially the rock excavation and the clearing and pruning and, you know, at one, I think we can definitely do that in-house. I don't know about the rock part of it, because they're gonna have to have specific things to do to...
Yeah, the rock would be performed by them.
To put the signs in or, you know, light standards or whatever, we have to finish, finalize on that. You know, this is all cost and unfortunately, this falls, when you have a dam in the middle of your town and you surround it, I think this is something we also have to think about, that this is gonna happen going forward with anything we do along the river, anything that we approve or improve along the river, we're gonna have to think about that. Think about the liability side of it and, you know, are we gonna be caught in this again, where we have to comply with somebody else's regulations and then spend money forever to try to take care of it?
My point exactly, I brought that point up before, where we do have areas of the river that we do have title to that we know we own and we're not lighting and signing that.
Because there's no, there's no hazard there yet.
There's no hazard walking through a river?
No, the insurance company has identified as a particularly hazardous area for the potential for drowning the boil that's in the front of the dam.
I know. Dam's been there for how many years?
Can hope for the best.
Marty?
Well, I just think with all of the discussion that we've had on this though, we can't at this point start making cost benefit analysis on, on what a life is worth, because the minute that we don't, it's a, it's an unwritten rule in insurance, the minute we say no and we're not gonna light it, you're gonna have a boatload of 10-year-old boy scouts that are gonna go over and they're all gonna drown. That it's just Murphy's Law.
I'm sorry, one last thing I did not mention, I forgot to. Bill Kellam, our in-house sign person, did look at the pricing for the signs as well. He said many of these items are at cost what we would get the materials and of course, these are installation costs. So he said the costs for the signage items are very competitive.
Yeah. And they're using whatever requirement is as far as the reflective quality and...
Yes, yep.
Ellen? So Gary, just how much if we spend, it's not to exceed $71,000, how much was the engineering cost again? Was that like 18,000 or?
The WBK engineering cost? It was like 10 or 15,000, something like that, yes. You're in the neighborhood.
So in essence, about 86 or something like that?
If we spend the whole 71. And the 71 includes a contingency in and of itself.
Right, 5%.
Yep.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Any other comments? Anybody wanna make a motion? Recommend the council, resolution 18-72-R?
Second.
Motion by Chancet, second by Salvati. Roll call.
Can I just say again, I will support this, not knowing who owns the dam yet. And I'm still under the understanding that we do not own it.
Those 10-year-olds, thank you.
What's that?
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
Brown?
Nope.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Risotto?
Aye.
Atack absent, and Stark?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Okay. Item 19, project status.
Okay, so in community and economic development, we have received a permit application for a proposed industrial building at the northeast corner of Reddant and Douglas. Staff is also reviewing a number of development submittals. One is for the windmill landings, congregate care developments, also for Winding Creek, the Land Meyer Farm behind Sam's Club, and also for the Park District's Eastside Community Center.
How big is the industrial building? Do you know?
I believe it, oh gosh, I was gonna say 50,000 square feet, but I think it's more.
102,000.
102,000 square feet, yeah. And it is by the same developer who built, no, it's different?
Different developer.
It's a different?
MIF.
Okay. HPC reviewed the changes to the, the city hall renovations yesterday evening, I believe that was approved, is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, it was.
And also with regard to the Wilson Spewler parcel, that we have received an assignment from the individual who had that under contract with us, has transferred his rights under that contract to Habitat for Humanity, who is hopefully going to be coming in to propose some type of development on that property. But they are going to be the ones who will be at the closing to purchase that property.
How does that work? Can that work that way? I mean, we didn't approve a contract with them.
Yeah.
But I guess we sold it, we approved a contract with, and he's...
Yeah, what happens is the, we talked to the city attorney about this when the contract purchaser was looking at transfer to various other entities. And he said that because it's a type of, because it's a contract that we can, that he has the right to assign it to pretty much whoever he wants to. So, so that's, that's what's happened here, is he's assigned it to, you know, he's looked at different developers. In this case, Habitat has expressed an interest in the property, so he's transferred his rights to Habitat for Humanity. They did indicate that they are probably gonna come back and change how it's configured, because the six lots was what Kevin Stowe was proposing. They would like to have a little more room for the buyers of the property, so they're gonna come back and probably propose four lots instead. So they wanna have a little more yard for the, for the homes.
So any changes from what the original contract purchaser were, would have to be approved still?
Yeah, we'll have to go through some type of approval process. We have to go back and look and see exactly what, what has to happen. Does it have to go back to plan commission? Does it have to go back to city council? Because there has been a plot that's been approved by the city council with six lots, so there is gonna have to be some amendment to that approved in some fashion.
Also for economic development, is working with communications coordinator and also with Anthony Isom to produce and distribute a community business survey that's been out there for a couple of weeks now. They have between, I would say between 50 and 100 responses to that survey. And the purpose is to find out from our business community how they feel that they are being served by the, the services provided by the City of Batavia and what things we might be able to do to both improve in order to retain their business, help them grow their business, and how to attract new businesses to locate here in the city. So we'll look forward to sharing the results of that survey with all of you. On the public works, there is commencement of the construction of the windows and masonry project is well underway here at city hall. And also, we have mobilized for the start of underground construction for the Ward One drainage improvements and continuation of the overhead electric reconstruction project that's being performed in the Highlands. And crews are working in the West Cemetery right now on the Area 3 storm waters, storm sewer separation project. Was mentioned earlier today that the odor control measures have been operating for several weeks now at the wastewater treatment plant. And there is a noted considerable decrease in the odors associated with our sludge processing. The final downtown seasonal planters have been completed, they're really looking great. And we also have executed a contract with a contractor to remove the radium sludge from our water treatment plant backwash pond. I will be on vacation next week, so I will not be here for the city council meeting or the committee of the whole meeting. Right now, there are no items that are planned for that particular committee of the whole agenda. Should there be nothing that comes up, then we would let you know that we can cancel that meeting. So we'll send notice of that out. I'd like to reserve judgment on that until later in the week. Sometimes we never know what might come up that needs to be addressed the following week. I also wanted to share with the rest of council, last night at our strategic planning session, there was plenty of discussion about the river and coming up with a comprehensive plan for the river. And we are aware that the Batavia Park District is also undergoing planning with regard to the river. And so it was suggested that on, we try... And so, it was suggested that on, we tried for Monday, June twenty-fifth, to have a combined meeting with them, just so that we can get an understanding of the type of planning that they are undertaking. And we have an opportunity for all of you to share with the Park District Board what type of planning you're undertaking, so that we can make sure that those are coordinated efforts. And so, I just wanted to bring that up, particularly for those of you who were not there last night. Just a heads up, I'm gonna be working on trying to coordinate that meeting with Allison Neamal. I've left a message for her. Let's see, anything else? The Tomley Building closing, we would like to get that completed by the end of the month, but we should have had an ordinance at this City, Committee of the Whole. But I was wondering if there's no opposition, since we know that this transaction has been planned, if it's okay to bring that ordinance directly to City Council, just to give you a heads up. Okay?
Sounds good.
All right, great. I think that is all that I have, unless anybody has any questions.
No question?
Mark? Sorry. Marty?
My question was with the advance disposal.
Yes.
I think there's some confusion whether or not the, their request for a rate increase came as part of their proposal?
Yes.
Or came later?
It was...
Part of the original proposal.
Part of the original proposal.
So, I'm curious as to why that wasn't explained to us initially.
At that point in time, staff was recommending moving forward with Lake Shore. And in fact, the committee meeting, staff received direction not to communicate any further with advance. So, we didn't spend any time on advance's proposal document, especially to page ninety-nine and one hundred, which is where those were okayed.
Good answer. Proactively on several of the traffic alerts and power outages, they've been fantastic.
Great.
They've been really pushed out in different methods, and there's been a noticeable downtick in, my power's out. Anybody else out?
Absolutely.
And just taking a lot of that, the chatter away, and it's just been really informing everyone fairly concisely, and it just allows people to get back to what's kind of more important.
Sitting in the dark. Thank you.
Anything else? No, okay.
All right.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right. Any others under item twenty?
I just wanna point out that we have over here in the corner a bunch of nice furniture that's been donated to the Batavia Fireworks Fund by Surl Matter, at Barco, and this is all gonna be often auctioned, or not auctioned. They're gonna have a raffle, you buy, sell raffle tickets at the fireworks, and they're gonna pull them, and people will win a set of table and chairs, or these benches here. Take a look at it, it's really nice.
Really nice.
Marty, can you buy the tickets online, or can you buy them in advance, or how do you buy tickets for the raffle?
I have no idea. I wasn't doing it.
Good job, Mr. Firework.
All I know is they ran out of tickets.
Aren't you on the fireworks?
No.
Neither am I.
They spent part of the afternoon working on a new website, so I think all that's gonna be disseminated here very rapidly. But they had a very, as most of you know, and many of you showed up and helped, and thank you for all that you did. Sunday at four o'clock, if you'd asked me, what's this gonna be like, I would've told you, we'll be lucky if we have a hundred people here. And I think at the end of the day, we were the opinion there were several thousand that showed up. And certainly, the bulldogs being unleashed certainly helped bring that together, along with all the dancing acts and young performers who volunteered to perform. They all brought grandfathers from Chesterton, Indiana, and all kinds of stuff. And so, at the end of the day, they made about three thousand dollars for, helped pay for the fireworks. So, it was a most worthwhile event. And Mother Nature seemed to be, knew exactly what we needed, because about four o'clock, it stopped spitting rain, and it didn't start again until they were locking the door in the Pegbon Center after they had counted the money. So, the weather couldn't have been any more cooperative.
And that isn't just like a patio set that you can get from, I mean, it is about, from what I heard, about four thousand dollars from Barco. So, that's a pretty healthy contribution from them.
So, I just had them move it in here on Sunday night, so we could talk about it here, and if other groups are in here, we can probably put some little information up on it, and people can see what's going on. The other thing that happened at the fireworks, I don't know, or party the other day, I don't know how many of you were there, the Flag Day Committee came up with the idea that we should present every year to some organization or individual in town, a award called the Bernard J. Sagrant, or the Doctor Bernard J. Sagrant Patriot Award. And this is to honor and highlight people in town who are doing something to pay specific attention and appreciation for the American flag. And so, this year, the Flag Day Committee decided that the honor should go to Batavia Boy Scout Troop Six, which is the ones that run around on Memorial Day, and Flag Day, and Veterans Day, and put the flags, you pay them to do it, but they put the sets of flags in your yard. And that's become a very popular thing. And so, needless to say, when we informed them we were gonna name them the first honor, they turned out en masse, the whole troop and all the scout masters, and everybody came up on the stage, and we presented them with the award. It had all been engraved, and I explained to them that we can't give them the award to take with, their name's on it, but we're gonna hang that in a plaque here, here in the council chambers, and we had the plaque, and it'll be going up here in the next couple of days, and then next year, we'll take it down and give to some other worthwhile group that's honoring, doing something to honor the flag. So, that seemed to go over very, very well. And the Boy Scout Troop tells me they've already gotten some publicity about it, so much that they're getting new orders from people in town that say, gee, I'd like to sign up for that service and have you come and put a little fight in my yard, and then you stick the flag in there and come and do it on the night. It's quite a little event, and I guess they're making some nice money for themselves, but there certainly aren't a lot of citizens who are now taking avail of it. Other than that, sir?
Just on that front, definitely a large hats off to that troop for coming up with that idea. Having been a popcorn kernel in a previous life, the amount of money that goes towards, you know, albeit it's great that they have, you know, Trails End, or whoever sells them the wreaths, or whatever is the fundraiser. With the flags, it's a one-time upfront cost, they get a hundred percent of the proceeds afterwards. There's no percentage going outside of the community troop to a third party. So, that idea right there, which has grown, I was talking with Don Miller, it's grown and grown year over year over year, and they've really done a great job now, where it's at the point where the scouts are actually not even having to pay dues, let alone for some of the campout adventures that they undertake. So, it's really ballooned into a great thing for them.
And I had another town call me last week here, wanting to know more about this, because they had a Boy Scout troop in their town that they were trying to entice to do this, and I think they did, from what I heard Sunday night. So, the Batavia model is out there, and other neighboring communities are following up on it and doing the same thing. So, it seems to have been extremely well received.
There's some interesting conversation going on in some quarters of talking about Bernard Sagrant, and where Flag Day actually originated, and obviously, you know, Waukesha has the congressional designation for that, but I think has been put out there. We've never claimed that where Flag Day started. I think it's kind of goes back to what Rudy says, kind of like a gang, once you're in, you're in. And once Batavian, always Batavian. So, he was living here, and that's why we should be celebrating it, and just because it's the right thing to do.
He was living here in nineteen sixteen, when Wilson first proclaimed. Interestingly, we have Batavia residents, or former Batavia residents, who are deeply entrenched, were born and raised in Wabika, Wisconsin, where this all started. And so, we've had the Wabika people down here, I've met with them. I have been to Wabika, Wisconsin. I got a call on Sunday, the best man at my wedding is a gentleman who is currently the fire chief in Fort Washington, Wisconsin, which is right next to Wabika. So, he called me up, and he says, they asked me to call you and find out, are you doing the Flag Day ceremony down there? Says, we're getting rained out up here. And I said, yeah, we're doing it. So, I said, tell them that we're carrying on the tradition down here. And he says, well, they had some stuff planned, but he says, I don't know if they're gonna get it done, because it's raining pretty heavy up here right now. So, anyway, well, I thought it was kinda cute that they were kinda wanting to know if we were doing something in Batavia. As Marty says, you know, I don't think anybody can claim that it all began in one town or another. It just kinda spread, and Sagrant was here, he was up there, he was here. And then, I guess on a national basis, there were other people in parts of the United States who also were all part of that same movement, and led the publicity and lobbying that went on to get Wilson to do it. But probably the biggest catalyst was, is that the United States of America nineteen sixteen was under heavy pressure to get involved in the World War One situation, which they did. And this was just a nice way for Woodrow Wilson to be able to kinda ease into that, you know, hanging on a lot of the American patriotism that was surrounding the idea of the Flag Day. Once it got adopted and put into place, it's been around ever since, although for many years, it was kind of a holiday that not many people observed it here. But, you know, we kinda picked it up a few years ago, and it's taken on a kind of a new, renewed life here with us. And if you go to Wabika, they've got the school where Sagrant first taught, and that was where he started this whole thing about June fourteenth being Flag Day, and they got the whole story written up there, and it's a cute little thing they got. If you're ever up in that area, I encourage you to stop by and see it, because it's a neat little display they got. What we're talking about doing outside here, we'll dwarf that, but, you know, whatever. It's all part of the same sentiment.
All right.
Elliot?
Yeah, just one more on the other category. So, over the last couple of weeks, I've had conversations with a handful of residents in my ward about some speeding issues, particularly neighborhood, you know, excessive speeding. Van Norwick, north of HC Storm, McKee, which is kind of an odd duck, because west of Van Norwick, it's more of a throughput than anything else, and North Avenue, from Van Norwick over to Western. Just a lot of straightaways that people are able to kind of, you know, really push the pedal a little bit further than they'd like. And of course, you know, with this conversation, you know, there's the usual requests of, you know, can we get more enforcement? Can we get more, or can we get the speed limit lowered? And, you know, there's back and forth, there's costs, of course, with both. And so, I wanted to kinda, first off, say thank you to Gary, to the chief, and to Laura as well, for, you know, some of the input that I got there. But I don't know if, Laura, if you wanted to talk a little bit about what you had proposed?
Sure.
Because I think it was a great idea, so.
Thanks. Well, as you know, we get these requests quite often from people who perceive that people are speeding through their neighborhoods, and they're understandably concerned about the safety, the concerns that that causes. And so, I looked, and how some cities have addressed this is through a campaign, an informational campaign, and specifically through the use of yard signs. And I think that a lot of the reason why people are speeding is what's on their mind is the fact that they're running horribly late for something. And they just really aren't thinking about the fact that they're passing through a neighborhood where children are living and playing, and at any time, somebody might make a mistake, and their little bike might roll out into the street, or they might come running after a ball that has gone into the street. And I honestly don't think that people have that at the forefront of their mind, and they feel absolutely terrible if something happened. So, by putting something noticeable in yards to say, hey, kind of, I'm your neighbor, could you do me a favor and slow down so that my kids are safe to play in my yard? I think Batavians might just respond to something like that. And so, I've seen that, Dan sent me information on how inexpensive these signs are to produce. And so, I'd like to look at maybe designing a sign, and maybe the city would consider producing those signs, and those could be distributed through, say, our neighborhood schools. And parents could pick them off and put them in their yards, and it would be a reminder to all of us to drive a little slower through our neighborhoods.
They don't need to be permitted, do they?
You don't, because you would put it in, on your yard side, not in the...
Not in the parkway.
Not in the parkway.
As part of the information campaign, I had mentioned to Elliot, I would have no problem going to some of these usual suspect streets, knocking on someone's door with one of these signs, and saying, hey, would you like us to put one up in your parkway? What a great opportunity for us to meet our neighbors, what a great opportunity to be proactive in some of these obvious usual suspects.
Mm-hmm.
I want one in my park yard. For a twenty-five.
At a buck a sign, we could get a lot of signs out there.
Right.
And something I've noticed, too, is I think, you know, the more I test drive throughout town, especially that area, it's typically, what I see is, it's the residents.
Right. It's our neighbors who are speeding.
Blow through the stop signs with the phone on the steering wheel, or that, you know, come flying by at forty miles an hour on North Avenue, while I get my head out the window trying to listen for noise. You know, it's amazing to me, a couple of those places that are just absolutely racetracks.
Yeah, two of the routes that I mentioned, they're of the three. There's no reason to be driving down those unless you live in that area.
Right.
So.
So, we'll put a proposal together for you.
Thank you.
Okay, that it? All right, then, we've got two more items on the agenda, which are both executive sessions. The first one is gonna be setting the price of land for sale, and the other will be executive session for collective bargaining. I need a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, second by Salvati, then are entered to executive session for the purpose of setting the price of land for sale and collective bargaining. And there won't be any action.